Well, he was Ricky's plan.
He was, but he's going in city.
Okay, yeah. I thought he was over here.
And I'm wondering, was it already?
You've got something exciting going up there. I'm wondering. All right, we're live.
Yeah.
I love those guys, don't it? That part.
We'd like to start off with the opening prayer. Joe, would you leave us a prayer again?
First of all, thank you for another day. Just thanks for the blessings on these individuals as they try to take care of town business. Just asking for the keepers safe while it says on Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, call to order the office meeting of the Upson County Planning and Zoning Commission. How can we get roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hilton, here. Chairman Fallon, here. Commissioner Murphy. The record show that Commissioner Murphy is absent. Vice Chair Rush, here. Mr. Lewis, here. Mr. Chairman, we have quorum for your September 8th meeting.
I said it's August, it's September meeting. I get them all mixed up here, okay? All right, we move forward to the adopted of the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody have any opposition, anything, or changes to bring up in the?
I make it a motion that we adopted the last first minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Annan?
Annan's here.
Upstate?
Yes. I wouldn't know what to verify.
Two, zero, one, Upstate.
Okay, then we're gonna move on to old business, which is Clark Shavel Baptist Church. The site plan review. I think we presented the, I'm sorry, excuse me, we got started with. Marty, glad to have you, buddy.
Yes.
Make a change.
The record showed that Commissioner Murphy entered at 5:30.
Thanks, sir. We had just adopted the minutes from last meeting. Did you have any opposition, anything?
I did not.
Okay. Moving on to Clark Shavel. The site plan review, and we all got the site plan last meeting. Does anybody have anything to? Did you, you want to look over that and see?
I've seen.
See if we got it.
Chairman, I wanted to be noted that I'm excusing myself.
Okay. All right. Make a note of that, Mr. Secretary, okay? I don't have any particular questions myself. Is it county water or well water? Municipal water or well water?
I think it's city water.
City water?
I believe it. I don't know how that works. I know it's in the county, but I think it's city water that's down that route.
And I didn't see noted on here building capacity, personal capacity.
Two thirty-nine, two thirty-eight or something like that. I think he may have came up with two thirty-eight, I believe.
Anybody else got any questions about anything to?
I guess the one question that I have for Mr. Jordan is, who is gonna be your G C on this project? Since it is a commercial building, correct? Commercial building? Who will be your G C?
I was told that you can't ask that.
You were told you couldn't answer that?
I was told that you can't ask that.
Oh, okay.
You mean, is that correct?
Obviously, this is not the permitting process. I mean, just general interest or questions.
Okay.
I don't think it really is.
I mean, I'll answer it. We have chosen one.
Okay, you can have one chosen. Okay.
He said he does not have one chosen.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to throw out there, I don't believe there's anything we can't ask.
Okay, I was wondering about that. That's news to me. I've never run into a case where we couldn't ask a question.
I was told that that question couldn't be asked because it didn't have anything to do with whether or not it was fast or not fast. That would be decided by building zone.
Okay, any other thoughts, ideas?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annan? Four, zero, one. Thank you. One Upstate.
Okay, next business is, we've been working on this, the zone amendments ordinance. And we had a planning session with that, and Doug has typed up some of the changes that we've got. And I think, you know, we're just getting them today, or yesterday, we probably need some time to absorb these. So I would make a suggestion that we continue the amendments. Part of the zoning that we've been working on to give us time to digest what we've got here. Do we want to go over these changes, Steve?
No, sir. I think you're late. Receive warrants us time to do a comparison.
Okay. And sort of flip-flopping there, but on the subdivision ordinance, which we've continued also, I make a suggestion that we do another planning session for the subdivision ordinance amendments. To work on that, does anybody have any thoughts?
I think it's probably a good idea, but I think we need to get this first portion closer to something we think that's gonna fly. Because there may be some effect going to the other, I'm not sure.
Okay. So we will have a continuation on both of these items here then.
Mr. Chairman, the notes from Mr. Rush, and that was before I got to your workshop, talking about some confusion about density, and I took some time today to sort of prepare something. I don't know if that helps, or if you wanted to discuss that now. I think maybe the most telling thing, again, you'll see the Flint City part where I just make up something, and this is probably more traditional and easier to understand, the Flint City part of the table. But what you do see on the other side is what's real in Upson County. And you'll see that through the zoning ordinance, we do have zoning districts that actually, in the current zoning ordinance, say that this is for low density, and they say for medium density. Absolutely nothing says it's for high or extremely low or anything like that. And then we have a couple of the zoning districts which allow residential, but because they're planned unit, you can come in whatever you propose, could be high, could be low. There's not really anything in there other than in the P R, which I don't think any of you have ever dealt with unless Mr. Hilton did a long time ago. The P R is for, it would be for apartments, of course, we've never used P R on any apartments, but we have used the P R for our manufactured home parks. And you'll see that there is a maximum, number one, you have to have a minimum of three acres, and you're allowed to have up to seven manufactured homes on each of those three acres. Now, no surprise here, there's actually a little conflict in the ordinance where part of it says that the minimum acreage for a park is ten acres, and then we got a couple places that says it's three. So if that were to go to court, it would go with three. Would be the minimum lot size before you can have a park. So we do have some density, at least, for what a manufactured home park would be. But again, we don't really call that high, medium density, you know, low or anything. We just have a number there. So if that's something in the future, again, the question was, what is low, medium, high? The bottom line is, name a town or county, it's wherever you decide it is there. You see in Flint City, anything that's one unit per acre or greater than one acre, one for two, one for three, one for four, is low. Medium is in dwelling two to five, and then high is six or more. Of course, now you're into maybe townhomes, apartments, duplexes, triplexes, multi-story. You know, in a big, massive New York City, your density might be five hundred, three hundred, two hundred units per acre. So it's whatever your community wants, but we've just never, again, if you look at the distribution in our single, let's see, we've got low is one unit for two acres, one unit for one acre, one unit for one acre. Medium is one unit for half an acre or one acre, and maybe up to four units possibly for an acre. So what's the big difference? You know, we go from one to four. That's not much of a difference when you say, well, what's low and what's medium, what's high in Upson County. Again, what you look at is what's allowed in your zoning district, and if they're all bunched up at one per acre or one for two acres, it's kind of hard to say, well, we have low and we have extra low and medium, et cetera, et cetera. Now, there was a change that happened before your workshop that, and this was language that was put in an earlier draft, when A R was gonna be twenty and when it was gonna be twelve, that was gonna be very low density, I think. That's still in the draft for A R to be very low density. So we now have that defined in your zoning ordinance with the amendments. But it's obvious not twelve or twenty, now very low density, if that language stays in there, is one unit per five acres. If that continues.
Okay, that's where we, I think where we proposed it at. So any other discussion on any of this that anybody wants to bring in?
The fact that we have conflicting language with the other ordinance.
Yes, well, it would have to be the one to five, yeah. Yeah, that would be with A R being five, yeah.
Well, talking about where it says the conflicting language in the ordinance for mobile homes and manufactured, you got a three and a ten acre, call it out in two different places. Well, and it's just taken working on these things because that's not a corner of our ordinance as we really exercise very much. So that means staff has not paid it much attention, but when I had to for this chart, it's like, wait a minute, one place it says you gotta have ten acres to have a manufactured home park, and somewhere else it says three. So certainly, if you want to include that in your recommendations to clarify where, which number we want to use, because if we went to court, they could go with a three. That's what the courts. So, yes, sir, I think we need some clarification in this process of getting approval for the ordinance changes. Unless somebody disagrees.
No, I think we need cleared up while we're doing it.
I think so.
Yeah, make sure we get it as much cleared up as we can while we're going through this to prevent us from having to look double back if we have a problem.
Sounds like it's the first time we noticed that discrepancy.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's not even anything that, I mean, we've got zoning districts you probably don't even know we have because we've never used them, and I still didn't pay them much of attention because we just don't go there very often. They have some problems, they might. It's just that, you know, every nook and cranny, unless you spend a lot of time with it like the zoning administrator does, you may not even notice these particular issues, and then it might take you thirteen years to find it.
One of your P R zones just listed and sold out of North Town that P R was out on Nineteenth and North. Well, it has a contract.
It actually itself?
Yeah, it was got a contract on it, yeah.
Well, and you have a lot of control on that because that was one of the few manufactured home parks that actually did rezone to P R. And there is a plan and our conditions, so recently, the attorney contacted me wanting to know what those conditions were. You know, so I sent those to him. But I didn't know it actually was sold. But we have a number of manufactured home parks that aren't legal from a zoning perspective because they've never changed from their original zoning to P R. And P R is the only zoning district that a manufactured home park can be in.
All right, then we need to work diligently on getting these changes resolved and get them on paper so we can get this turned, work towards the subdivision amendment so we can try to get any suggestions or anything that we see in this on our email chain and get, see if we can get them definitely maybe done before our next meeting so that we can get this.
Now, Vice Chair Rush brought something up, and that's that obviously, we've had at least four rounds of changes from the original language. So now, all you got in this one was the changes from your workshop. Now, if you want to see everything, I'm gonna have to come up with another color that shows up, or do you want all the first, second, third round changes, one color in your changes for the workshop, a second color?
That's usually what we see, is that?
Yes. That was one of the things that we covered in the school.
Well, like I said, you see in your binders, you got two different colors, and then third round was boxed in.
Right.
So everybody could see.
Yeah, the third round was just added in in PDF format for the most part, like comment boxes. So that's a different process than changing it in Word. Those were kind of forced in there.
Well, they put it in a box, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But they were mine, obviously.
Probably changing all the old history, like to blue, and then the new ones to red or something, or vice versa.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to leave, you know, when you go through track changes on Word, it's a living document, right? So you see from the beginning what changed and what evolved to, and the last color is the last proposed changes.
So when do we think we can get that printed up, or sent out, where we can get it?
As soon as possible. I've got pivot to budget, which was due today and didn't get done. That's my priority now is budget.
So what will we be looking at potentially maybe to see this?
Hopefully, next week.
Okay. All right, and we have a motion to continue both these subdivision and zoning ordinance amendments?
I'm moving to continue.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and new business, we have any new business we need to address? Not that I'm aware of anything. Okay, in our other business, we had Stephen Jacklin went to Vincent Institute Training, and they're gonna give us a presentation on what we found out, on what they learned.
Steve, did you write that that I sent you? I know you have your name.
I read it, but I don't have a copy of it.
Okay. Here, I'll pass these out, and Doug, I made you a copy as well.
Thank you.
Um, let's pass those down. I think that's. It was very interesting, I'd say, because I had been through this class before, and there were a lot of different things, as I spoke with Philip this morning, and some of the things that I was going over with him, he was like, we didn't go over that. You know, and so I think every class, every time they do the one oh one, one oh two, and all that is different. I know Steve and I, he was looking at his calendar because one oh two is December the fourth, I think, right, Steve? Because he was looking at his calendar, he had some things to do and to see if we could get in, go ahead and get into that class as well.
Okay.
It is, I think it's actually in Albany, isn't it? Is it in Albany?
I have not, I cannot be on December fourth.
Okay.
I'd love to attend, but by all means, you should go ahead and go.
Right, yeah.
You want us to get you signed up?
Huh?
You want us to get you signed up?
Yes, absolutely. Let me confirm that via email in the morning. I want to just double check my calendar, but I think that's fine. But it was, um.
My intention would be to take the first one upcoming at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it was very enlightening, I think. I'll let Steve take the floor first.
Oh, no, you wrote the notes. And you were doing it.
Okay.
Let's just keep rolling.
But one of the things they talked about, and there were several different counties that pulled up different things about the comp plan, their comp plan and comprehensive map, comprehensive plan, their character maps, and they, and she was very specific that minor changes need to be made every five years, major changes every ten years, and said, the one thing to do is consistently stick to those two things when you're making your decisions. Said, you know, of course, there's always a teeter totter when there's exceptions to every rule, we know that. And as well, she said, we have seen across the board in the state of Georgia, if people will stick to their comprehensive plans, that seventeen percent growth each year in their counties, which is great. And then the other thing was the, let's see, she said, this was kind of a comment that I really liked. She said that Planning and Zoning Commission Board are as good as the information they share with one another. I know that myself, Steve, and Philip talk very often, because Marty, he's usually, he's usually somewhere in another, and I don't get to talk to him, but, and the Planning and Zoning Director should actually share information, you know, with his, with the commission board as much as he can, not just at meetings.
In real time.
Yeah, in a real time situation, yeah. Like if something comes in front of you, then, you know, shoot out an email to all others or what have you. That's the best way to get to me quickly because I read my emails every day, usually three or four times a day. Encouraging, and I did bring my book, if you want to make a copy of it, you may, you may want to. I brought this book because there were a couple of things that I thought were exceptional, and it's like all public comments should be heard and factored into the decision, and it was on page sixty-six, which is very tiny writing, but it's like staff reports don't have to be in a certain format, you know, when, when giving it to us. But I know that Robert's rule says differently, but she said so many counties do them different that, you know, it may be that you send us something today, and you send it back tomorrow, it's like, okay, well, we have this information, so we want to add that to it. And it kind of keeps us in the loop of what's happening and something's not dropped in our lap, you know, on short notice, where if you want to go look at a property, and I know myself, and I know Steve does, I go look at a property, even when I wasn't on the board, I'd go look because I wanted to see what it was about, because I didn't want to comment on something if I didn't know what the property would look like. And she said that all board members should always go look when they're going to, like, rezone a property, go out to the property and look at it, even if you're looking at it from the roadway. It tells you a lot more than a picture will, and I would encourage that as well. Zoning or policing power was a really good part to help balance your community and property owners. And she kind of ha-ha, and it's like, if not, we'll all be living in the wild, wild west. And I've heard a couple of the board commissioners say that. Always do what's right, constitutional trust, public officers or trustees and servants of the people and are at all times amenable to, to the constituents of the county. I wrote them, but code of ethics for government service is huge. And then one of the activities that we did on one of the legislation acts was page eighty-four, and I think I actually put a copy of that page in here, was the comprehensive plan, character area, knowing your water and sewer, traffic burden, adjacent properties, is it a negative impact? And of course, we've seen this one in full, where people think it's a negative impact, not a positive. They usually don't show up for the positive ones. And then, of course, she said that special use permits, and several people commented on this, it's like using the good neighbor process. Request and use must be listed in the ordinance specifically, the second item in the square. And that also was on page eighty-four that I included for y'all. I wanted to make sure that I gave you that, but I did bring my book, so if you wanted to make a copy of it, and if anybody else wanted a copy, you're welcome to it, but I just do want my book back. Let's see, are your building and zoning office being proactive or reactive? And I can't say for your office because I'm not there on a daily basis. I'm hoping that we are being proactive, Doug. When applications are taken for special use and rezoning, make sure they are listing exactly what they want. And of course, that came up in a recent case where they said, we just want to rezone it to commercial, but they didn't know exactly what they wanted to put on there. It's like making sure everything, so it's not a waste of anyone's time, them coming or our time as well.
So can I comment on that?
Yes, absolutely.
I've served, I've sat on many planning and zoning boards where it is a straight asking for a rezoning of a property. That a lot of times, a developer can't tell you he is a multi-tenant end user, but he can't tell you what his customers are gonna be. He's going into a, we're gonna, we're gonna say, just like our property on Nineteenth South, that Ms. Green was trying to take some A R, right? And she's trying to rezone it to commercial. She may not know what her use is, but, so she's coming in just asking for a straight rezoning. She may turn it into a convenience store, it may become, you know, whatever the commercial allows, but a lot of times, they don't know that. They're looking at buying a piece of property to develop for future commercial. So sometimes, I think we should take a look at it to say, okay, what is Highway Nineteen? Is it A R, or is it actually considered the corridor of a commercial path? To my opinion, I mean, if you would look at past history of Nineteen, up and down Nineteen throughout, there was old hotels, there was old convenience stores, old restaurants that's now closed, that's within close proximity of that property. And so we have to look at those things overall, and when they come in, to consider that, is it, would this fit in a commercial use? And you look at what's allowed in commercial use, would you be willing to accept any of those uses in a commercial use? If that's the case, then yes, it should be approved as a yes on that. I don't, I don't think I was here on Ms. Green's when she came in, but I think we were asking her for her specific use she wanted at that. We should look at what is commercial, and would we be willing to accept any of those items in that commercial according to the plan or to, to the ordinance? And that's what we should look at, because a lot of times, when people are buying property to develop, they don't know the end use yet. They just don't know it.
A lot of times, they're just looking to get it entitled, which is what you're talking about.
Yeah. And so we can ask the question, what's your intent? But if it's just a true rezoning, they don't have to give it to you. Now, we can choose to deny them. We have that right. We can choose to deny them, which is what we did. But we have to look at the overall comprehensive plan. Is Nineteen commercial, or is it agricultural? You know, and on those corners of those roads, at one time, I bet you that was commercial there before. Because I know for sure, years ago, Pinky Park was part of, just, just south of here, and then there was hotels and convenience stores. I know when you go a little bit further down where Nineteen and Eighty is, there used to be two convenience stores set right there.
And there's a hotel just past that, too.
Yeah.
That little hotel right there. I forgot to buy it up.
I mean, so, yes, we have the rights to deny it, but we should look at it at open mind as are we willing to accept any of the commercial uses there? Thank you.
Good deal. And then the next one was building a better community. What is your vision statement for your growth? I don't know, I don't know that I have seen a vision statement for our growth. If there is one, I would love, I would love to see it, of course. But said, only observe where people in the community struggle. Ask the question, what is the next smallest thing we can do right now to address the struggle? Do that thing, and then do that thing, and repeat, repeat, repeat. In that way, you know, you're bettering your community, which I totally agree with that. Some of the things that may not, I'm really gonna let Steve do this part because I, but there were some compliance issues that's, that's in this book here, that its zoning procedure laws should be at all meetings, printed and labeled in a binder, not electronically. This should be in a binder somewhere in the back of your meeting room on a table so not to disrupt the meeting being conducted. Make sure all of your zonings are documented and updated in the binder for your staff in your meeting room. There were several people that were already doing that, and that is a new act that has gone forward. So I think when we get all of this combined with, with this, I definitely think we need to do that because a lot of people, and, and Steve and I were talking about this at lunch that day, it's like you go in and you put in agriculture, A R. That may pop up on a hundred and fifty pages. They don't know where to go at that point. And I know when I first started looking at ordinances and trying to figure them out on the internet, it was so frustrating to me till I figured out what coverage to put in. And I think having those at that point, if they do have a question, they can ask it after the meeting that day. So I think that's something we do need to do. And then, of course, minutes of all planning and zoning meetings should be online for the public to obtain within two days of the meeting held. I know before I was on the board, I went to the board of commissioners a couple of times in the open forum, saying, could we please get planning and zoning meetings minutes on the internet? And I know Jessica said she was working on that the last time that she and I were chatting. Planning and zoning board. Um, planning and zoning boards should have packets in their hands, either in hand or hard copies, no later than ten to fourteen days prior to the set meeting date.
I did.
I assure you that will not happen. Not unless you want to hire a whole lot more people.
Well, I'd like to understand why, because that is in, it is a requirement.
But when it's not an requirement. It's probably a good practice.
Well, Sunday night is not a good practice.
That's when it got finished.
Okay, but we need to work on that particularly. We're going to as a board and a, uh, planning and zoning team, we need to work on that. Whatever that means, I don't know what your challenges are, I don't know what the problems are. Obviously workload is driving most of it, I guess, I'm saying, but we need to figure out how we can get better at it.
Well, it's now budget time, and I was just told that the planner we've been trying to hire for over a, a year, we probably won't hire anybody for any unfulfilled positions, so.
Well, they just posted the job.
Right, and then they, next day we were told to take it down.
Oh, wow, you're talking about the new county planner that just went up? I mean, it flashed in my mind the other day.
Well, and we've advertised for a position before, we just never got anybody.
Just never had anybody.
What we did is there was a conversation between the HR director, myself, and the county manager. Said, we can't get anybody to apply. Can we try for an intern? Maybe we can grow our own. So maybe if we still can't hire any, well, and that's if we're allowed to hire anybody this year anyway, or even in the next fiscal year, um, maybe Pearl should graduate in November, December. I think she would be interested in coming back. Well, then we grew our own, which was something we talked about, is if we can't get one to apply, then maybe we can grow our own.
You still have to have a budget to pay for it because they don't come back and work for free.
Right, well, that's true, we have to be allowed to hire them. And right now, as of the news that I got this afternoon from the HR director was, oh, that position we just advertised, we're taking it down.
Let me encourage y'all, if y'all don't have a comp plan, get one.
Yeah, I've got it now.
My hat.
Let me read you what the vision statement says. Our vision is simple, involving everyone, embracing change and achieving our potential. That is the vision statement. And there's other information in the back where other people from Upstate County have written down what they would like to see. This comp plan is very important. Now, if you are seeking for other information, dig into this comp plan.
We're supposed to be guiding the, uh, community to that as a planning and zoning board.
Right. And I mean, and two, I mean, that may be something that, I mean, it, it's really not that many pages that, you know, if, if somebody needs one, I mean, I know that ink costs a lot, paper costs a lot and all that. But if somebody needs one, they can do a request, like a, a document request or something, if they don't have the capability. Or send them the link where they can pull it up on their own, you know, computers or what have you. I think that that could be an encouraging way for people to really look at your comp plan.
Well, I believe it's on the, on the website.
It's on the website, yes, that's where I, that's where I found it. Because I'm constantly, like, if you see me, I'll be constantly looking at, especially the board of commissioners meetings. But, um, the other thing that I had that said to, to, um, even though we have sign up sheets, I understand that, said that they had found they got better, um, participation from, from the gallery. If they, um, had them at the meeting door with a greeter saying this, you know, are you, you're here for X, Y, and Z. Sign up on this sheet, even though you do it well, I'm not saying that you don't. But, um, you know, maybe doing it outside on a small table, I don't know. And, but I, I do want to say if, if there's something that I personally can help you with, please call me. I'll, I'll be glad, I will be glad to help you with anything.
Also, what I was going to recommend is that, you know, for that situation, I know Doug's pretty much a one man show with what's going on. We could aid in as we, we could greet people as they're coming in saying, hey, are you here to speak on behalf? Or in opposition, there's sheets up front, if you want to do it, you have to sign up now. Once the meeting started, nobody signs up, that's it.
Well, that's the way it's supposed to be.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
And I mean, and, and even, you know, with anything else, I mean, if there's anything that during the week that I can, you know, if you, if you need help and hey, do you have a couple of hours on Tuesday? Call me and, and if I do, I'll come. I mean, now, if I'm in Dublin or something, I, I can't, but, um, you know, jump on my jet plane to come back home.
Right now with all these amendments, I mean, the hot topics, you know, I, I, you want to research one of the hot topics, whether it's, you know, access points into a subdivision or what do other places do on flag lots? Um, I believe that Pearl did some research on that and I haven't had time to even look at what she, she got.
Stuff like that is something that you could send us that, that's, you know, for us to look over too, you know, as, as she prints it up. I mean, that's not that hard, just electronically send it to us and we, we've got some of that stuff to look at, you know, just along with it. Like we talked about as far as time, Ms. Mendo, you're, you're, you know, you've got more than you get to. But a lot of this stuff, I, I would think would be fairly easy just to forward it right on to us as y'all get it into y'all, which gives us that extra time to look at it and, and digest it, uh, which I know we started doing that some, but still some information is not coming as readily, you know, that when y'all get it. So we could step that up and make sure we get all this type of information and like this stuff such as what Pearl worked up, you know, whether you've had a chance to look at it or not, we could also, you could send to us where we could.
Sure.
Well, I, uh, I certainly am willing to participate in whatever it takes. Receiving the package a day or two before the meeting does not work for me. I know it doesn't work, that doesn't give me time to do what I need to do to go through a process of, of studying the proposals, the requests, the information in the packet. Um, Doug, that was a pretty definitive, it's never going to happen. I don't know that that's how we should approach this. I think we should approach this in a more proactive manner, which is how do we get this to happen? How do we make this happen?
Well, and I, I like, we've been trying to hire a planner for a while to cut my burden in half, and we've just either not been successful or like right now, it's like, well, are you going to allow us to hire somebody? Or no, for the next fiscal year, are you going to cut that position? It's not real clear right now, so.
Well, with all of us, anything that we make a priority happens. Things that we don't make a priority just don't happen. It kind of slips through and it happens, you know, at the last minute. I would like us to figure out how to make this a priority.
And if we're not going to get anybody hired, we've got to figure out a way to make it work so that we can do the job that we're charged to do. So.
Yeah, I mean, then one of the things is like the subdivision ordinance, you got a hundred and eighty days from the LARQ date, that that has to be done because you're in a moratorium. And it was already a, what, a hundred day before that, correct? The subdivision ordinance, wasn't it a hundred day already? Then we went to a hundred and eighty days. So in my brain, I'm just thinking days and numbers of, of how to get those kind of things done. And that's even like on this document here where you gave us the snippets. But like Steve was saying, some of those amendments are in every single ordinance. That's where you got to change them all or add to them. And, you know, if that's something.
It takes an intentional effort. I, I appreciate everything you did Doug in this for sure. Um, but I think it takes a little more, as you've already asked questions, how do we want it to look? So you are aware of the intentional effort it takes, I know you are.
That's all I had, I think it was a great class. Um, I think that even if, and like I say, I mean, even if you have taken one-on-one, and I don't know how long it's been, there were a lot of different things that were brought up.
A lot of changes.
That, that I had not seen, of course, you know, I've, I've been out of it for a couple of years now, and I was just like, wow. And it, it is a, the one-on-one classes are a little bit different than Gaza. They don't provide big drink water, not even a mint. Um, Gaza, you have a spread. So it was, um, but, but it was, I mean, it was a really good, it's got some great, um, case studies and, and, you know, what would you do, how would you do it? Um, and there were a lot of questions, we almost didn't get out of there on time. And I know Steve and myself, we were like looking at the clock going five o'clock traffic in Atlanta. So we knew that we had a, um.
How big was your class?
Huh?
How big was your class?
Big, their seat was filled, but about thirty, I would say fifty-ish.
No, there's a lot more than fifty, there were at least.
Seventy-five.
A dozen tables of ten people.
Yeah.
Well, I've never, I mean, I've been to three or four of their classes and I, and all of you, most of you have been to them too. Do you know your class was never even close to that?
I was surprised.
There was one, uh, there were, I know there was one, one, two, three. There were six tables of a complete department.
Yep, Manchester being one of them.
Manchester was one of them.
The entire Manchester has turned completely over and everyone was there.
They had closed their department for that day, they were all there.
So that was the staff?
The entire staff was there. And I mean, to me, that was, that was awesome because they all heard the exact same thing.
Yeah.
And so I, I thought that was great, especially since so many of them were new. They had a new direct, I think a new director, um, and then all of their staff below that were there. And then there was one down somewhere, Toons County, I think. Brun, somewhere near Brunswick. They had their whole staff there because they had had a lot of turnover. And they knew that there were a lot of changes, so it was, it was an amazing class, I think.
Yep, it's a good class.
And, um, I, I'm still looking at one-on-five, I was reading it, all of the information about it. It's like one-on-five is my like, I think that's going to be my jam. So it's, um, and it's about truly about growth of your county in the correct way to grow it, so.
One thing I think you mentioned to me that I didn't, that you bring up was the, the thought that the, our commission and the county commissioners should meet periodically to.
Oh, yes.
That was something that, yeah. And like I said, we've, you know, we tried that and we got stubbed on it. And I, I think that that's something that we need to push a little order on is to meet with them so that we all have a, you know, a, a good idea where we both add so we can, you know, direct the growth in the right way.
Well, it all falls back to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So we've, if, I think it's a great idea for us to meet with the commissioners to get their thoughts and visions, because things change, right?
They do.
I mean, I know myself, I talk to, to District Two a lot. I mean, he and I chat often about different things. But, um, that was one of the things that she encouraged more than anything, she said it two or three times. If you're not meeting with your board of commissioners, you need to be.
Well, we can be running on separate tracks instead of parallel.
Yeah, and I think that we want to be running on the same track. Because if we're not on the, I mean, we will always agree to disagree in life and in board meetings, but at the same sense, if you're, if you're all traveling north, that's a, that's a good way to grow. But if you got half going south and a couple going east and, you know, it's just, it's, you're always going to have some contention, I think, going on, so.
Well, I don't know that we're going to do interim amendments, but of course, twenty twenty-three is when we did our comp plan. So that means the next update will be twenty twenty-eight, which is still a ways off. If you want to start making notes and if you got a big enough change you want to make to the comp plan, I mean, as you said, it's a living document, so there's no rule that says you can't make interim amendments. I mean, when we became a broadband, uh, community, we amended our comp plan for that, that was part of the law, so. That was a board of commissioners, they wanted to make that change in the middle between comp plans, so there's nothing that, I mean, if you wanted to, we could be ambitious and you could make changes to your comp plan every year.
I mean, I think everybody on, on the board here is, is smart. And I think they're all proactive and want to see the right growth in Upstate County. And, and I don't, I hope I'm not speaking out of term, but I think that we all have the same.
Well, the term that I use a lot of times, sustainable and directed growth, you know, we want to be able to sustain and, you know, directed in the, as the comp plan says, in the areas and the, the types of things that we want to, you know, we feel like will make this county better.
Yeah, and I mean, Chairman Fallon having a brick and mortar store, you know, under, under his direction, that's really important to, to him and all brick and mortar is to make sure that we've got the right path and right growth going on, so. But yeah, that's all I have, um, and you know, that's all.
Thank you. Well, there was a time where the board of, of the planning commission didn't know about those classes and the chairman didn't want to go. That was a long time ago, but I'm glad that you enjoyed it so much. And I know that most of you have been to at least one or two of these, so.
Well, the more educated we are, the better we can serve the community in the right way.
Now, Vincent, they've been doing these classes longer than I've been in Georgia, so they matured and changed, as you said. And I guess it was Missy that, um.
Yeah, Chrissy, um, gobbled her last name. Um, and do you, do you want to take this and copy it? Okay.
Mine is very old, it's been a long time.
Yeah, and it, it does have, and like I say, I mean, I guess if, if anybody wants a copy of this, you know, maybe when he's getting Guadalupe to help him.
Would I suggest that we scan that in and just circulate?
Yeah, and then send it in an electronic document, that would be really great.
Sure.
So, um, but yeah, you'll see my little, I got little flags everywhere, but, um, it was, um, it was a very educational class, Marlowe, Chrissy Marlowe.
Yes, Chrissy.
Um, and she did not do the last classes that I was in, but I also took one-on-two, one-on, uh, one-on-one, one-on-two and one-on-three at the same time over at Greatwood Lodge. They did it in, they did a three session in a whole week, like a three day thing. And it was really like, I felt like a big giant ball that was a sponge and I was seeping out of the sponge. I was like, oh, this is too much. And, um, but yeah, it's, a lot's changed since those classes, just, that just going to the one. But she's, like she said, I am always here and we do have the ability, if you want everybody to hear exactly what we just went over, we can come to you. So if you wanted, you know, to have, and she said the thing, the one thing is, is if you're having training, you're not considered a quorum, you're in training. So it's not like you can't have the board of commissioners and the planning board in one room and you got to invite the public. You don't, because any training is not considered a, a public meeting. So that was nice that she even said that and several people met with her very quickly after going, we may want you in our community to come and do that, which is great, I think, and maybe even cheaper, I don't know.
Probably not. Price has gone up quite a bit, more than doubles since I went to those classes, but.
Yeah, they're, they're about the same price since I went, I think, when I looked at it, but, um, yeah. But that's all I have. And like I say, I mean, I was just bringing some of the stuff that's in this book and you'll see it. And, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's meant to help us all grow and be better. And that's what we want to do is be better and more educated.
Absolutely. Well, and I actually do budget for y'all to go to the classes, I have to sort of guestimate the budget, but, you know, obviously you weren't, there you go. Your enthusiasm for going to these, please tell the board of commissioners, because they're in a cutting mood on budget from what I was just told, so.
I think you should add in, I want to go through the rest of them, which is five more, and I want to get them next year.
Yeah, I would second that, I definitely want to do the same, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I want, I want them all, I mean, if I'm going to sit on this board, the more education I have, the better decisions I can make.
Absolutely, for our community.
Yes.
And if you've got your per diem, I understand you paid for lunch, if you would like to reverse for that.
We'll get that.
Get us.
Did y'all have steak?
No, she requested barbecue, just like old country girl would do.
Yeah, he wanted sushi and I'm the house to your allergy, so. He was trying to kill me right out of the gate.
We were in that world up there.
We were.
Well, now that we know we can sign up anytime, we thought there was a window and that's why we missed you the last time. We thought it was too early to sign up, but apparently Chrissy's changed things. Now you can sign up months and months early. Okay, well, we have that philosophy with our, our professional organizations, whether it's Gaza or the other ones. As soon as it opens, we get our staff registered. So we'll do the same thing with y'all then, if, if, as soon as they announce it, they will take registrations, we'll do that.
I don't think they've announced next year yet.
No, I haven't seen anything, I do get those emails.
I think it actually has the, the thing, the, all of the classes in here when they are, if, I'm pretty sure it is. So anyway, if, if she can scan this in.
Next year's schedule in there?
Uh, yes, some of them fell over into next year, so.
I have not, I do get the emails, that's why I can alert y'all.
I'm pretty sure it's in here, Doug.
I haven't seen one of them last year.
Yeah, because it had, some of the classes were actually in Albany, which is short drive, no traffic.
It used to always be, Jeff might remember Athens.
I don't remember.
So that was a bit of a. So that was a bit of a haul that.
Ah, well, let me tell you something, I could've got home from Athens a lot quicker than I did when at Georgia, because it started raining as soon as we walked out the door. And it didn't stop raining until I walked in the door and it was a hector of a drive home.
Well, yeah, they're never close. There you go. Talk to Chrissy about getting classes and meeting.
I know, right? That would be awesome.
I'm gonna like the idea just bringing them here. You know, we can all be here.
You know, I mean, and the thing is, is the Gaza, um, we did take from Meriwether, we took our entire staff to Gaza. And that, that was a treat in itself, but going back home, we used to live in Savannah, was kinda nice. Um, but the area that we lived in, we paid $360 a month rent and it's now $3,600 in that same apartment. I was like, wow. Uh, you know, over on Jones Avenue is very popular in Savannah now. But, you know, it was in walking distance of River Street, but eh. But it was, um, that was a really, that was a really informative, um, conference, Gaza was. I enjoyed that. But.
And where was that one at? Was that at Wolf Lodge?
We had, um, some of these classes over at Great Wolf Lodge. They have an amazing, um, conference area.
But this one was in Lawrenceville, right?
Yeah, we had to go to Winnet up there. And it's right off the interstate, which is great, but still, you gotta drive from way up there at 85th. Um, and being there at nine o'clock was, I think Steve left about six, seven, I did too. So it was, um, it was a, it was a hard drive that morning. I had forgotten just why I don't live in Atlanta. But I, I'd be hungry if I left up here again. It's a lot of traffic. We're, we're used to our traffic here. You know, most traffic is get to the restaurant at 12.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that the training, you found it worthwhile. Not all planning commissioners always have, so that's, that's great.
I liked the workshops, it didn't need the activities. We had a really good group. We had one that was kinda sleepy, but.
You think you had 75 people? That's more than double the ones I.
I guarantee you it was minimal.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. Cause there were 10 chairs at each table.
Yep. There was at least a dozen tables.
That's, that's double any class, and I've been to three or four of them, that's double